Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Baikman?
Present.
B Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
EKIS?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Schroller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
Thank you. I did not have any amendments. Did anybody have any amendments? Okay, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A-do. Next item of this public comments, anyone that is not on the agenda may speak for five minutes, giving their name, address, and ward. Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right, moving right along to business and discussion items. The first item up is Kevin Cromie with the sale of lots. Kevin, would you like to come up?
I don't know if everybody has a copy of the proposal. Does everybody have a copy of the public survey?
Yes, they've got a copy of the survey.
Okay.
And that spreadsheet that I gave you.
Yeah, they've got a copy of that. Okay. I guess what we're interested in is purchasing a couple lots there right next to one of our warehouses on, at 609 Car- well, across the street to the north, 609 Carolina. And what we're wanting to do with it eventually is, well, for now, it's going to be outside lumber storage and concrete block and stuff like that. But I guess long-term plans would maybe to put up a new building there someday. I guess I just proposed that we purchased the lots for $4,500 apiece. Immediately, we're kind of interested in lots 11 and 12, and maybe lots 1 and 2 behind that if it's available. I guess the one lot is about half the size of the other ones, so I guess I was hoping respectively that it was, you know, as far as value, it was worth about the same price per square foot on that lot.
Rick?
Yeah.
Is Lot 3, is that where the caboose is?
Yes, I went and looked.
Yeah.
Would you be interested in Lot 2 possibly? Possibly. If it's contiguous. I was thinking that Lot 2 was a full lot, but it's like, I don't know if Lot 3 is a lot and a half, or how it shows that.
Do you know that, Rick? That line goes to mid-
They were full, but it's just-
What is it, a line? This is something else.
Well, let's see.
That line to the center of two?
I think they're all full lots. You just can't see 2, the numbers are blurred. But yes, 1, 2, and 3 are full lots, because we bought from Thompson Lumber, we bought 3 and part of 2, and then when we acquired the rest of it, we got 1 and a certain percent there of Lot 2.
But he has this, his building's here.
So the Lot 3 is like, there's a lot and a half then, probably.
The dark line-
The dark line in the middle of 2, is that our ownership line?
No, no, that's the line that separated what we got from the- this is the survey that came from the UP, so that dark line was the boundaries of the UP property.
Okay.
And so we owned 3, and you can see where the caboose, but we owned, I think it's about 15 or 19 some odd feet of Lot 2. So when we acquired the rest of it, we got all of 1 and the rest of Lot 2.
So we own all of 1 and all of 2.
So we own all of 1, 2, and 3.
Oh.
So 2's a full lot.
2 is a full lot.
Yeah.
It just says on the county report that it's 2,471 square feet, and the rest of them are 4,530.
Right, that's correct, because I was taking the property that we had acquired from the UP, not what we already had.
Oh, that part was-
We already owned that.
Part of that, okay, okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, obviously, the caboose where that lot is, I probably wouldn't be interested in that at this point, I mean, until, you know, that was moved, but-
You don't want to buy the caboose too?
I don't know what to do with it.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Well, we could always move that over to Lot 11 if we need to another time, right?
Yeah, I'd be a little nervous of selling off and isolating that one lot, because that makes that lot vastly less marketable. I mean, you wouldn't want to probably keep the caboose there forever anyway, because it'd be blocked by his use of, you know, Lots 1, 2, so then you'd just have that island lot.
I guess what we're immediately interested in was 11 and 12, and then I thought maybe pushing the others off till next year.
Okay.
If that's-
Sounds good.
It sounds like a plan, but-
Sounds good, it's time to work on caboose. We're good with that.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the sale of lots 11 and 12 of Block 89 in Marysville. It's located on the north side of Carolina Street between 6th Street and 7th Street.
Second.
Do you want me to say the amounts?
Okay, you can do that.
The 2 lots at $4,500 per lot. And Cromies agreed to pay the closing costs and the property tax for 2015.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A-do. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep, have a good night.
You'll draft up a purchase agreement? All right. The next item is on page 6, is the vacation of an alley ordinance number 1839.
Need to approve ordinance 1839, vacation of the alley for the West Star.
Is there anything running through that alley currently?
Sure. Sure, that's why we're reserved movement for sure.
Okay.
Second.
It says right there under Section 1, ingress, egress, and regress for the sewers.
Okay, I see it, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Baikman?
Yes.
B Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
EKIS?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
8-0.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks for stopping me. All right, the next item are title reports regarding the West Star property purchase on pages 7 to pages 27. Do you want to give a brief recap, Margaret?
Sure. You should see there on your page 7, First Amendment to the real estate purchase agreement. So you had agreed to sell this to West Star. We signed off on a contract. They want to amend it because they want to essentially add this, an addendum concerning environmental issues. So it's environmental indemnity. In a nutshell, what they're saying is, if there are any environmental issues on that property, and to my knowledge, we don't know of any, but if there are, then, and that West Star somehow got pulled into a lawsuit about that, we would pay their expenses. Of course, we'd probably be sued too. Now, that doesn't mean that West Star could pollute on that site, because if they do anything after the purchase, future pollution, we're not agreeing to cover that. Now, although I'll concede, sometimes there can be a disagreement about when pollution got there. But Rick and I visited about it, and he kind of covered the history of it. He's very familiar, has read through the reports, that the environmental reports, and feels very confident that that area doesn't have, to the extent that we can have any confidence about it, doesn't have that issue. There was some KDHE testing, and what they did do was negative.
Right, well, it's on page 24. If you look on page 24, it's an email I got from Maggie, and I discussed this with her. And the email came to me, and Doug Dubeck on there, he was also one of the guys in charge. If you look at that second paragraph, "Based on the results of the November 2012 BTA report, further investigation on the parking lot west of the former depot is not warranted. If there is a concern for unrestricted use of these properties in the future, additional samples could be collected by the KDHE Site Assessment Unit in conjunction with additional sample that needs to be performed on the former depot property." And the discussions I had with Maggie were that even though there were a couple of pourings there, and one of them showed arsenic or something, that they didn't feel it was worth any more, because it was 15-foot deep. I think, as I recall the conversation, their only concern would be that if you run or dig a well, you might be concerned, but we don't allow wells in town to be dug and drilled. But that wasn't acceptable to the UP, that, they didn't like that, because I discussed it with Rick Harris. Said, "Look, there's no problem." Well, we don't agree, because, just because KDHE said there's no problem, so that was why the railroad stuck those additional things on there. There was no need to, based on this, but they did not accept KDHE's assessment. So, yeah, I'm comfortable with it, I don't believe, West Star's going to use it for storage, they're not going to be digging and building buildings and all that stuff over there.
Excuse me, Rick, but they said they might in a future time put a building there? Because that's when we discussed whether or not we were going to vacate that.
Is that what you said, Brad?
Yeah.
The only thing I might have mentioned is that would be a lean-to or something like that, it would not be a-
Foundation type.
A foundation-type of building. No, not at all.
Like a pole building, that.
Yeah, a pole shed possibly, and obviously, we would go through the proper channels to do anything like that. But in the foreseeable future, we have no plans at all to do that. It's strictly going to be equipment, material, storage.
So the issue then is, we need the, if, because this is a change to the agreement that you had previously approved, we would need the council to approve the amended agreement. And the purpose then is to tell you why, that there's this environmental indemnity that they wanted to include, and we feel comfortable that it would be okay for you to sign off on that and agree to it. And otherwise, you've already authorized the sale and any necessary documents that would need to be signed. So that's kind of where we're at.
The reason I voted no, when we were talking about the agreement and the contract to buy the property, the entire thing, from the UP, is because they went from the seller's point, that once we bought it, that if we got sued for anything that, anything that happened because of contaminants there, or as soon as we sold it, that it could come back as far as on us, but couldn't come back onto the railroad. And now, we're selling it, and they're saying, anything we find, we can come back on you. We're not going to be responsible. So railroad told us we were responsible, because we were the buying party, and now we're the selling party, the new buying party is saying you're responsible. So that's where we're at. The only thing is, I do feel comfortable that that property never had any contaminants, it never had trains on it, it never had oil leaking on it, they never stored anything on that lot. I was raised three blocks north of there and walked by it every three times a week, probably. It was always used as a parking lot, it was never used to store chemicals or anything. So I'm comfortable, and it's been asphalt-covered, I'm comfortable there's no contaminants on that site.
And I might add that our Phase 2 survey that we did showed the same thing. There were no contaminants that would prevent us or anybody else from wanting to buy the property. It's just, we're just a little bit better than dealing with a railroad. So, I'm sure that's part of it. We've just, as a big company, we run into these situations once in a while, so it's something that they felt they needed to do, but I think everybody in our company also feels comfortable with the original KDHE study, but we had to go in and do a little bit more too, so.
Well, in the spirit of getting the property sold, and in the spirit of doing business, well, both with the railroad and with West Star, you know, I would think, I would agree to their conditions.
So I would entertain a motion for the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the purchase agreement, the environmental indemnity, the warranty deed, as well as, I think there's one more document, owner's affidavit.
I second it.
As long as that includes, you know, documents to closing. Proceed with closing.
Proceed with closing.
And to proceed with closing, I second it.
Can you second? Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A-do? Thank you, Brad.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you. The next item up is the trail on pages 28 and 29. I did speak with David, just to fill you in what he told me today. They are going to do, as you can tell, they moved it to the far left, because KDOT said it could not hang over the right of way. So that's why it's positioned on the pole as it is. And KDOT also requested that they bring it down to under 32 square feet. So, my question is, were you going to do something with the pole, because it looks bad? They said they're going to paint the pole, that this, they said the sign would be blue, it would be two-sided. I'm sorry, the sign's blue and white, and it's two-sided. And I guess that's a painted pole. Oh, and KDOT, he does have approval from KDOT that it meets their qualifications for an off-premises site. So based on that, we've already, have we actually approved this sign?
No.
So we need to approve this sign, and then they're requesting that permit fee- Sign permit be waived.
I move we approve the sign and waive the permit fee.
Second.
Is there any other discussions? Were there any other questions about the sign that I didn't ask Dave?
I just thought we'd already approved the larger sign, but we didn't approve-
The change.
Yeah, is that what you're approving, is the change?
We're approving the sign as presented, it's just slightly different, and the dimensions are actually-
Yeah, it's slightly smaller, yeah.
Right.
The sign that was approved, KDOT would not approve or install.
So the sign, the dimensions they have there, they're slightly bigger than they were, than they actually are going to be, but they are going to compute to the 31.68 square. Okay, so we had a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A-do? All right. Notices and hearings. Are you aware of any of that? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have 3 items, all related to travel and tourism.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A-do? All right, the next item up is the appropriations ordinance number 3615.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance number 3615. Second.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to pull a couple of items from the appropriations ordinance, do I do it now?
Yes.
Do I make an amendment, or do I just ask for the seat vote for discussion?
You just ask them to be pulled, and we'll vote on the rest.
Okay. I would like to have pulled, oh, sorry. Sorry, trying to locate.
It's on pages 39 to 41.
Kansas Secretary of State bill, and the Allied Insurance Group bill.
Okay, we will-
Which ones?
The Alliance?
Okay, on page 39, what did I say, Alliance Insurance Group, for $50, and the Kansas Secretary of State bill for $25.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on the rest. Does anybody have any other things they would want to pull?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question about the J and A traffic products. There have been 50, 50 street name signs ordered, or will be ordered. Do we have something in place where we're replacing all the street signs? There are some of the white ones, well, they're actually, they're so rusted, you can't read any of the streets.
We replace those as needed. Are you talking about the street name signs? That's what that's for, is we, we're not doing them all at once.
So how, what kind of process do we have?
They're trying, they break them up in sections at a city. And I didn't look, I didn't look at that bill to see which streets were what.
Okay, so if we notice, so if we notice some that are really in need of replacing, let you know?
Well, guys already know which ones need to be replaced.
Okay.
We're just trying to bill them.
It's an expensive process to get them with a 6-inch reflective letter.
And we ordered them all at once, would have been $20,000, $30,000. We're trying to split that over about a 5- or 6-year period. We hadn't worked on them for about 3 or 4 years.
But if you have a specific sign that you can't read, you can notify-
No, there are several of them.
You can notify Rick or Debbie, and they can keep a list.
Okay.
Just in case a street department misses them, you never know, so. Okay, so we will approve the appropriations ordinance with those 2 items pulled. If you want to do roll call?
Baikman?
Yes.
B Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
EKIS?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
8-0.
Okay, now we'll address those 2 items. You want to tell us why you pulled them, Vicky?
Okay, I've asked for these to be pulled, and I discussed this earlier with Rick, but the, what it is, is a bond, the Alliance Insurance Group is the bond for notary for Rick, and it's for 12/20 of 15 to 12/20 of 2019. And it is the same amount of time covered for the Kansas Secretary of State, December of 2015 to 2019. Well, considering that Rick leaves us in June of 2015, I did not see the purpose for us paying to bond him and insure him into 2019, when his current notary doesn't expire until April 26 of 2016. So we're paying for 4 years, when really, we'll only have use, he retires at the end of June, so we would only have use of him for 2 months, for a 4-year bond and 4-year insurance coverage.
Less than that.
Pardon?
No, it'll be more like 6 months.
Well, but you're already covered by the other one till April of 2016.
Without the bond, the notary commission is no good after December 31st.
Are you saying you've never had a bond before?
Yes, had a bond all the time.
Well, your bond expires at the same time your notary does.
No, the bond expires December 31st.
Okay, well, I just didn't see-
I'm just saying, the commission goes to 2016, because that's what I discussed with Jen over there, how they got the way, and how they got the way, we don't know, but it's just the way the state did it. I think they were late one time on the commission. But what happens is, the commission's no good without a bond, and the bond expires 2015, so if this cancels, and I told you, whatever you want to do, that's fine, I'm just telling you, the commission would end December 31st, even though it says April 26th, because you have to have a bond.
Okay, well, you didn't tell me that when we discussed it this afternoon, but I still feel the same way about it. I mean, to pay it into 2019.
Do other staff members have a notary?
Cindy's the only other one.
Cindy, please. And all the police do.
And all the police.
So that is the reason I wanted to pull this, because most likely, whoever Rick's replacement is, will have to bond and insure that person, so there would be paying somebody else. I just thought we ought to save this money to pay the next person's bond and insurance.
What's the total dollar?
Seventy-five dollars.
I guess I would counter, if that's what's required to do the job, even if for 6 months, then it's-
That's right.
Worth $75. I mean, I realize the police department, but I'd rather not pay their hours, they're sorry to, you know, and if Cindy's not here, so.
Okay, I pulled it. Up to y'all to decide to pay it or not pay it.
I move to pay the Alliance Insurance and Kansas Secretary of State bills.
Second.
For Rick's bond.
For Rick's bond.
Notary.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? You want to do roll call, David? Since this is part of the appropriations ordinance.
B Singer?
Yes.
B Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
No.
EKIS?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
No.
Schroller?
No.
Throm?
Yes.
4-3. I'm sorry.
5-3, I was working on that. I was like, 4-3, really? Okay, so 5-3, so we go ahead and pay the entire appropriations ordinance. All right. Okay, next item is Rick.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. On page 44 is the letter I received from State Department of Agriculture. This is in reference to the appropriation of water, that application that the council had agreed to send in. Got this back fairly quickly. And as you can see, they have agreed to extend that perfection period until December 31st of 2020. And since that will be the end of a 30-year period, they will not allow any more extensions, unless really it says there, there are some extenuating circumstances, I'm not sure there ever will be. So as of December 31st, 2020, that will be it, the perfection period, so this is, no actions needed, I just wanted you all to be aware, so. Some of you may still be around, another 5 years on the council, so you're aware of that. Now, this does not affect, this does not affect well 12. This is 9, 10, and 11. We haven't even reached our, hmm, let's see. We'll be at 5 years this year, I think, on 12, because we did that in 2010, I think. So we've only got about 5 years on well 12, so.
We get a separate?
No, that's good for 20 years, you won't have to, I don't, I think the initial one is good for 20 years.
Oh, okay. Rick?
Yeah.
Pardon me, we've been asking for extensions, when it reaches 2020 and there are no more extensions, what's the ramifications on us then?
Well, there are no ramifications, it's just what they do, is look at those water use reports that have been submitted over these years, they'll determine what the peak usage is, the maximum water usage, and then they will issue the water right. I can tell, I mean, we have the water rights now, but they perfected, you know, I've never seen what happens when it's perfected, but they'll issue a letter probably at the end of that time, and say, "Here is your maximum water that you can take from each of those fi-" they call them file numbers, but they're wells. Here's the maximum amount of water you can draw in any 1 year for those, and that's what you're limited to.
Does this tap the Ogallala Aquifer? What's the aquifer?
I'd have to look in the file, but it's not Ogallala, it is an aquifer. Oh, it's not too far north, you know, the real water had their well field out there north of Hall Brothers. Now, you can see where the old wellhouse is up there. And it was almost on the headwaters of the aquifer.
I understand the aquifers are being depleted, but at this time, they're considering capping our usage, so have we come anywhere near what they have determined is a cap? So far, we've been asking for extensions.
Don't they use our usage to determine our cap?
That's what they'll do.
Yeah.
That's what they'll do. They'll look at what it is, in 2020, they'll take a look at what it's been over those 5 years. And then, how they determine it, I don't know, but you know, it goes up, some years, dry years it goes up, wet years it goes down, I would imagine they average it, and they'll say it's a peak period.
Now, is there a, I guess, we call it a step base in there for population growth, does that, will that change anything, Rick?
I doubt it. I mean, that was one of the reasons I put in there, what, you know, we expect there probably will be some additional commercial growth, you know, I mentioned in that application, you saw the application.
Yeah, I seen the app.
You know, we've got some housing, we have no effect, what, you know, in the next 3-4 years, there could be a business come in, it's a high-water user. That would be good, because, see, that would get, get your use up. You don't, I mean, yeah, we don't want to conserve water, but you don't want to get so overboard on conserving water that you're really cutting yourself down, because you that you're really cutting yourself down, because you have to understand that affects your water rights in the future, so. So it's nothing to get upset about, it's just, you know, it will run its course after thirty years.
Well, two thousand twenty will be here before we know it.
Yes, it will. Yeah, it's not that far away. It's five years away.
I don't know if we have any options.
No.
As far as drilling wells elsewhere, or?
Drill another one.
Drill another? We still going to the same aquifer?
Well, yeah, if you need to, if you can get the water right.
Okay, thank you.
But remember, we have four wells, and you've got number twelve. And what we're doing, I, just as a reminder, for a number of years, over the past fifteen years, well number nine, we always had a lot of problems with lightning strikes. It sits right out there in the middle of that field.
Right.
And there were months, when that thing would sit, three, four months, waiting on repairs, with no water, we had two wells running. And so if you look at the overall usage, well number nine is actually the lowest. And so what we did once well number twelve came online was, we, we put number nine so that it's always running.
To make up?
Yes, because with four wells, you run three at a time, so, so there's a rotation. But, so it's ten, it's nine always runs, and then either ten, ten and eleven, ten and twelve, eleven, twelve, eleven, ten, whatever, so the other three, two of those will be running. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item is some information here based on our geometric improvement. Of course, what's proposed for X evidence tonight is a proposal from CES. And Tony's here, if you've got some questions, I'm sure you may have, for the CE, which is actually inspection. It's called construction engineering. It's inspection services, which is separate. We have to cover that, just like we've done in the past. And you can see the final estimate that Tony had to provide, the mayor. Had some questions from Tony today, and I'm sure he'd be glad to share with the council some of his responses if needed, is one, one-three-six-five-eight. Now, and then you, there's a letter from, excuse me, from KDOT. It's kind of an information letter, it requires a signature, but then they said, ah, if you don't sign it yet, we're not going to stop the bid. And that's on page fifty-nine? Yeah, on page fifty-nine. Basically, forming us that what they're estimating our local share to be is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Now, we've already determined, we're setting aside three hundred thousand, so that leaves two hundred and thirty-eight. Included in a five thirty-eight is this fee of one twenty-six-seven ninety-seven for the CE. So you, you take that out, and there's still maybe a hundred and some thousand. On top of that, or away from that, we expect to get about thirty-seven thousand dollars reimbursed from Casey's for their driving improvements. So you start pulling, so, you know, you're looking at a gap there of about a hundred thousand dollars, give or take. But I'd like to remain optimistic about this. For one, the CE fees are based on a hundred and twenty days. KDOT says, we estimate this is a one hundred day, twenty-day project. So when Tony put that estimate together, he had to estimate what it would take to do inspection services for a hundred and twenty days. Might only take ninety. Might take a hundred, might take a hundred and five. We don't know until the end, but he has to do that. So there's potential savings for that. I think Tony said, a project over in Washington, they had a ninety thousand dollar upper limit, they're sixty or seventy on that. You know, about two-thirds of that, so I think there's something in our advantage there. I recommend that we go ahead and approve the CE proposal. It's not air for signature, but it goes back to KDOT. They incorporate into contracts if we get to that far. And as I stated, Mayor, there's still the opportunity that, once it's bid in a few weeks, if those bids come over that date, over that estimate, not the date, or whatever the cost might be, I mean, we can still reject it. At the second meeting in December, the twenty-eighth, will be, I think, our final call, yea or nay, as going, because it goes to bid on the sixteenth, which is a Wednesday. And I think on the twenty-eighth is going to be our, our call on a yea or nay to proceed. But that'll give time to figure out if, if the bids do come in, even under this, and they're around a million, to work out, okay, we know we've got three hundred more, would we come up with any additional? So I think we're still, I recommend we approve the CE, let the project go to bid.
I, I had, I spoke with Tony this afternoon. I, I was trying to figure out how long ago, you know, when we did the budget, we set aside three hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand last year into capital improvements. And we had planned, budgeted another hundred and fifty to go January first. And we believed that three hundred thousand dollars was going to be our local share. So I was kind of concerned when the number came up at five thirty-eight today, or whenever I got the packet. I did go back and ask Rick for a copy of when we first approved it. It was, it was before I was on council. It was approved in April of two thousand thirteen, before, I guess Todd was the only one that was on council back then. But it did, the, the amount that, regarding the engineering, the preliminary engineering, construction engineering, it was about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand then, so that amount really hasn't changed. The amount of that, which is what we're trying to approve right now, is the construction engineering services. You know, my only concern is the actual cost of the project and the out-of-pocket going up two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. I went through and identified some of the things that were different from the pre-first bid to the second bid. And, you know, like the storm sewer went from twenty-seven thousand to ninety thousand. The manholes, we didn't have manholes, and we have forty-five thousand there.
Were those oversights, maybe?
Well, no, Tony, you want to come and discuss this a little bit?
Yeah.
Was manholes oversight, I mean?
Not really. The very first estimate that got submitted with the application was for eight hundred and some thousand dollars. That was built on a, well, actually, Rick probably remembers it, but this is the concept that was, was determined that we submitted with the application for this project. And Rick had asked me to come through and build an estimate based on this concept. So at that time, there was absolutely no design work really done. It was, here's what we want to do, figure out how many square yards of pavement we're going to have, how much curb, apply some numbers to it to build our estimate. So as the project grew, as it went into the design phase, starting in, I think, two thousand thirteen, that's when things started to change, and we added storm sewer, we added inlets, manholes. We added way more than what was in the original concept, that I felt was unnecessary to the project. And when you're spending that much money, that it would be worth, rather than putting like the curb cuts back in and having that open ditch, going with inlets and storm sewer, and trying to correct some of those problems. That's how it grew to what it is today. I went through also, and just to give you some examples, some different things of how it grew that much. The traffic signal at the time, I think Rick had talked to a reseller, and they had gave us a hundred and fifty thousand dollar number to use, and that's what was in that original application. My signal designer came back with a number of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, which is thirty-nine higher than what the signal designer had gave us to estimate. What will really come in at, you know, we'll find out shortly, but there's thirty-nine thousand right away. Another item is the storm water pollution control, which wasn't an issue even in two thousand thirteen. The, the state really got in trouble from a couple of their highway projects, and they implemented this large storm water pollution control program. And they're forcing any project that disturbs more than acre to have a plan done, have inspections done. And so based on KDOT's estimate, that's twenty-nine thousand for that item alone. Storm sewer is definitely the biggest, biggest contributor to the increase, but, you know, those are just some examples of how it went from eight hundred thousand to a million over that two-and-a-half-year period.
And some other costs that increased, like his, the concrete pavement, he initially had fifty-five, fifty-five dollars per square yard, and now it's priced out at eighty. And the surfacing per ton was, I guess, seventy thousand, I'm sorry, eighty thousand, eighty dollars per ton initially, and now it's priced out at ninety. So I guess, you know, it's two years later, you know, the question is, our out-of-pocket will in fact be five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars on this project.
Yeah, yeah, if the bids come in at that estimate.
Right.
If they come in less, it's going to be less.
Okay, so when I was, so when I was talking to Rick, I said, it's, it's set to go to bid in December, December sixteenth. So we can get the bid, if the bid, once the bid comes in, we'll have to digest whether or not we can handle it. But I thought we should at least be having the conversation, five hundred and thirty-eight versus three hundred. I talked to Rick about different types, where, where we can come up with that money. You know, one alternative was the industrial park. Since we're not doing an airport project next year, I believe you said a hundred and forty-two thousand enough right now?
That's right.
And we did, we have a commitment for that swab eaten, for the thirty-seven thousand on the floodplain, they'll have to come out of that. But there is some money there. So anyway, I, I guess, you know, for, for the, for tonight, the concept is, I didn't see that the construction engineering fees really changed from April of two thousand thirteen to this point. So, and that's what we're approving tonight. But I just want you guys to be thinking, and maybe we'll have more discussion at, at the budget workshop, about the five thirty-eight, where the possibility is, in case it comes up that high, where that money's going to come from in two thousand sixteen. But did you guys have any other discussion, or questions for Tony?
Yeah, well, I'm up here, I kind of want to apologize that this should have been a discussion I had with you guys six months ago, or a year ago, probably, and
Probably before we let it go out to bid, yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't have, should have been here before, so.
But, but going out for bid doesn't commit us to, commit us to it either, so.
Well, but we're already, what, fifty thousand dollars into this?
True.
With the design fees, you know, we're still at a point where we can say, we don't want to do this. And it makes me nervous when we haven't turned a spade of dirt yet, and we've, we've jumped up two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars just on our share. So, and I, I don't like change orders, but they're inevitable in a project this size. And once we're in it, once we get to that point where, where we accept a bid, we're in it. You know, then we're kind of at the mercy, I don't know who we have that has the sophistication in this area that can keep a thumb on, on this project, so that we know, you know, that they're, they're trying to save the budget.
That's KDOT's. The CES would do the inspection and the testing, but if they run into any problems with testing contractor, those go directly to the KDOT supervisor, the mayor, KDOT calls the shots. All, the engineer doesn't make the decisions as I read the contract.
That's correct.
And it's in this agreement. The, the engineer, if they discover problems, whatever, they contact KDOT. KDOT calls the shots, period. That's what that agreement says.
Yes.
All, all you're doing is inspect and testing, and if anything crops up, immediately contacts the KDOT representative, project rep, and that'll probably be somebody from Omegle, and they would be here, and that person calls the shots.
We inspect for conformity with the plans and specifications.
If there's a problem with the contractor, he calls KDOT.
Are those the gentlemen we met with, with Senator Elaine Bowers the other day?
Well, those guys are from, some of the Omegle guys, maybe.
You know, one of them was from, younger?
Yeah, there is in Topeka. He's in Topeka, he would not be involved.
But there was somebody from Omegle.
Well, Don, Don Carr, Campbell, and, and Mark, those guys would be the ones that would be making the calls for this.
So it's for KDOT to hold them to the contract, is that what you're saying? To this, to the specifications, to the scope?
To know any changes need to be made.
To the scope?
CES tracks it, making sure that the contractor's building it in accordance with the plan. If he discovers any problems, discrepancies, those are reported to KDOT. If KDOT makes a contact and tells the contractor, you do this, you do that, blah, blah, blah. Tony, as I understand, reads the agreement, doesn't get involved in making those field decisions. He informs KDOT, and they make the contractor do it. They make the contractor do it.
Okay, well, I feel better about that.
Tony's there representing KDOT and the city both. Because if we go to construction, there is a three-party agreement.
Yeah, I read that.
Between the KDOT, the city, and
And the contractor.
Contractor.
I read that.
And Tony is representing us and KDOT.
He, I, when I was speaking with Tony this afternoon, he said, you know, some of this has evolved over the last few years. And my question was, well, is there anything that you added that we could possibly take back out? And, you know, the only thing that he really quote added was the storm sewers, which would go back to where we have the, all those ponding areas on. And that's one of the main things I was looking forward to getting rid of, is all those ditches along that highway. And so I asked him, just overall, do you think this is a good project based, based on cost to the city of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars? Is it a good deal? And he was saying yes, because the key concept is that we are widening the highway two feet to the north, so that we can have that center turn lane all the way through those, that area, as well as adding the drainage and adding the stoplight. So we just have to look at it as, you know, our out-of-pocket has potentially increased.
And it increases, and it shapes off the hill rates.
Not very much.
Not much, but, not much.
And remove some of the extra driveways.
Turn, turn, turnout, yeah.
All that, Tony, turning lane has been needed for years.
So anyway, I just, you know, we just kind of need to digest that, that that's a possibility, but we won't know till December sixteenth for sure. And the bids could all come in higher than that as well.
They could.
And, and at that time, we'll have to decide to make a decision whether to accept or reject them.
I'd like to ask Tony, does, all these corrections in drainage, is this set down into a sewer rather than running it down the hill into like City Lake and on south of that? Because that's our concern, that's that water that we were supposed to do something about that got us in trouble in the industrial park.
Is the storm drains running down to Country Club Lake?
Are they going to run?
It goes to the same place it goes now. So there's, majority of it goes through Sonic, between Sonic and KDOT. It goes south there. Everything from Twentieth Street West will go, basically drains to an inlet on the north side, and then south through, between Sonic and KDOT.
It's kind of a little ditch there between their building.
And there's an underground, there's actually a storm sewer that's about fifteen, twenty-foot underground there.
Well, the grade begins to drop after Twentieth Street. So we're not doing anything past Twentieth Street toward the lake?
That will go in, we're getting rid of the ditches. Like there's a big ditch on the south side of the road, that will be eliminated. But the water will go in storm sewers and inlets, but head to the same place that it went before.
Starting at Twentieth Street, though.
There is a, there is, no, well, there is
Same water, it is the same place.
There is a storm drain there at the driveway that goes up to the houses. There's like a big hole there.
Rednecks?
There's a tube there.
Oh, okay, on the north side?
There's, on the north side of the highway, on the west side of the driveway.
Okay.
That's where this project ties in.
Okay.
So the water is going to go where it's always gone.
Well, it's going to take the water and take it west, then?
No, no. It's going from Twentieth Street down the hill, it's going to the lake, Twentieth Street West. It goes to where it goes now, to where that, that outlet is, where Carolyn's kitchen was. There's a big outlet, and it's going to all go into there. And then it's going to go south across between KDOT and Sonic, and goes down. And it's a big ditch down there by the Lutheran School, back behind there, and runs down that way. Actually, and that turn, from there, it turns, some of that turns and comes underneath there by the Jehovah's Witness Church, and then turns and goes down the tension ditch.
Well, that's part of the water that they're talking about, that's going, that they're raising such a fuss about, our elevation in the industrial park.
It's going there, it's going there now anyway.
Where else did we go with it?
I just thought it went into a city main, and
We're tying in, this project is tying into existing storm drains at both ends. It's tying in down there to driveway at those houses, and it's tying in Sonic. That's all it's doing. It's just, it's just taking out those open ditches and, and putting it underground. So that's all that's changing. Nothing's changing. We're not, not going any farther than where it's, you're connecting with two tie-in points.
Okay, I'm confident in that.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to approve the CE services as proposed.
We'd give her.
Second.
Is there any further discussions or questions of Tony? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Vito?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, I have three quick things. The city administrative search, I called last Thursday, and there were still three people who had not completed their surveys. So, three people?
Me, me, me.
Okay.
I sent mine in two weeks ago.
Okay.
I thought it was too late. I thought I'd missed the deadline, so I didn't send mine in.
I just sent it to the League of Municipalities. I didn't know where else to send it.
That was fine. That was fine. They just, actually, you mailed it?
He mailed his.
You mailed yours? Okay, did anybody else mail theirs? Is there anyone else, I can see if they got your mailed copy. You haven't done yours, Keith?
I don't, I don't think I even have it.
It's electronic, they email. I can send it again.
Okay, Keith, you're up, and I will check.
You'll send it by mail?
Vicky, do it by mail?
I can do it either way, I can print it off, and print it off or send it by email.
And Denny, by mail, I'll check.
Kevin printed it off for me.
I printed it off for Denny.
And I sent it in to the League of Municipalities.
Two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Did you send it to someone's, anyone's attention?
Leaps.
Leaps, okay. All right, I'll make sure they found that. Vicky, by the next meeting?
Madam Mayor, I will do my due diligence and get that filled out and sent in.
Okay.
I'll actually hand deliver it to you, how's that?
No, I want you to mail it in, Keith, mail it in. And we don't know anything about Schwab Eaton, you haven't scut any notes in?
Haven't heard anything yet.
Okay, and the only other thing is, with, going back to that meeting with Senator Bowers and veterans, do we need to have some type of written agreement that we're okay with the flags on the bridge?
I think what Mr. Younger indicated is, after the first of the year, we will, they will furnish us with an agreement that covers the flags on the bridge. When we were standing up here talking about that, you were there, and he was standing over there, and he mentioned it. Nothing this year, after the first of the year.
He will send us an agreement? He will send us an agreement?
That's the way I understood it.
He will send us an agreement?
That's the way I understood it, yes.
Because I thought we just, I thought we, as a city council, just need to agree in principle that we were okay with it.
I think it's going to be in writing. I understood it's going to be in writing, written agreement.
But you're saying he's initiating, not us?
That was my understanding, but after the first of the year.
Okay. Do you want to contact him and make sure that's, because I thought the way we left it is, as long as the city was okay with it, so I just want to make sure we get that.
I'll contact Mark.
Whatever documentation needs to be done.
I'll go through Womigo office.
All right, that is all I have. Debbie, you're up.
Okay, a few things. The first thing is, I just wanted to notify you that we had somebody quit claim deed some cemetery spaces that they weren't utilizing, so this is really terrific for people to think about that, so we don't have spaces that are just out there, so we appreciate that, and hopefully more will do that if they think of it. And the next thing here is, I did send a billing on the airport runway repairs for the $1,000, and spoke with Chris, he had called, and he has indicated he would like to have it waived. There were a couple of discussions about the blacktop that was placed out there, close to the hangars, I don't know if you've seen it, nobody could figure out who did that, he did that out of his own pocket. And he's just asking for forgiveness on the $1,000.
How do you guys feel about that?
I don't think he should.
No.
I mean, we had out-of-pocket $1,000.
He had that out-of-pocket $1,000 anyway, if he hadn't had the wreck. I mean, he spent that money to, to have, Debbie's talking anyway.
Oh, he did the blacktop, irrespective of the wreck, yeah.
It was done a long time before the wreck.
And our city was out-of-pocket $1,000. So, you guys are in consensus to have or pursue that?
Yes.
Okay, tell her the city is not waiving it.
That's fine, thank you. And then, I don't have any pages on this, but the gift certificates for full-time employees, this is something that we've done over the past several years, it's a $50 gift certificate for full-time employees, and the total cost, it's their chamber gift certificates, and the employees are taxed appropriately through payroll, so the total amount would be $1,650.
That's fine.
Do you entertain a motion? Do you want to go ahead and do a motion on that?
Move to approve the $1,650 in gift certificates for the full-time employees.
Seconds, sir, a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We can have discussion.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay, in the past, did we say gift certificates or Christmas party, have we done that, or did we do?
No, we offered never part of a day off or chamber bucks, and they decided they desired the gift certificates, so that's what we offered last year, I believe. Does that, do you remember, Debbie?
I kind of remember.
We said you can either have a half-day off, or you can have this, and they chose to... The gift certificate.
Okay, that's my question.
Could we have, like, cupcakes or cookies or something and hand out the gift certificates?
Now, you said in the past, we have had Christmas parties?
Yeah, last year, while this would be the third year that we've done it, we've had a lunch here at City Hall. In the years past, we used to do a Christmas party during an evening, renting the Legion or the Moose, and having a party and catering and stuff like that, entertainment, all that. And over the years, it just kind of dwindled down, there wasn't as much participation. So, we changed it, and we had the holiday dinner in here over a noon hour. So, we got a little better response from the employees coming in, and last year, we did it, and it worked out okay, so, worked well. So, I don't know if you want to, I'm kind of a little bit late this year, but I think we could sure call around and get some pricing on catering and have something here.
I think it would be nice, I think the more that we interact with our employees, we have the more opportunity to say thank you for your service. And so, I think it would be good for us to have it.
Christmas is a good time to do that.
Yeah, do a lunch.
And it's usually, we, the mayor will award the service awards at that time, then.
Oh, that would be nice.
And there's a lot of the city employees I have not met yet.
Okay. I would kind of prefer it to be earlier rather than later, like, maybe the 14th, 15th, or 16th, are you guys okay with that, having it the week before Christmas? Okay, so I'm good that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
All right.
All right.
Debbie?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Service awards? Weren't those service awards that were given out at the conference in Topeka?
They're...
What awards?
The League of Municipalities, they do the award for like 40 years and above. The other service awards, they send the certificates to us, and certain years, you get gifts, certain years, you just get the certificate.
Okay, so you like, get that all taken care of, will you have time to get that done before that?
Yeah, it's all done, it's already done.
All right, so you guys are all in favor of doing a lunch? And coming and interacting, I think that'd be good for us, okay.
So, there's a motion and second for the gift certificates?
We already...
Or gift certificates?
We already...
We kind of got off track a little bit.
No, we didn't, I'm sorry. Somebody wanted to have a discussion, okay. All in favor of the gift certificates, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? ADO?
And I'll just pursue the other and work on that.
Yeah, and you can send an email out on a date. As long as we're discussing about holiday, do you want to discuss holiday time?
That's great.
According to the manual, their employee handbook, they get Thursday and Friday off over Thanksgiving, and they get Christmas Day off, unless it falls on a weekend, and then they get the day before. So, right now, they're having Thursday and Friday after Thanksgiving, and so the question is, on Christmas being Friday, the 25th, if you want to do anything additional? And also, New Year's, which is also on a Friday. Last year, we didn't do anything additional on New Year's, but we did give them an additional day off at Christmas, correct?
Correct.
So, I didn't know how you guys felt. What?
That's fine, nanny till it snows.
Then do call them all back.
I happened that one year.
Debbie, Vicky, you have a question?
Yeah, don't we, don't we always let them off at noon, or as soon as they get their work done on Christmas Eve?
On Christmas, on the 24th?
That's why we don't have our Christmas party that week. It's been done both ways, we've been given the full day off, or we've been given until noon, it's done in both ways.
Well, maybe we can avoid the snow issue by making it noon on the 24th, so in case it does snow, we have the streets cleared before. I'm okay, if you, how do you guys feel? What would you like to have the holiday schedule be?
I just didn't give them a full day off, half-days are, a lot of people are just about worthless, I mean, I've worked a lot of jobs where we had half-days. You just got to get started, and all right, it's noon, there's a lot of camaraderie, you know.
In the bank, you have to work twice as hard.
Yeah, but bankers get like, what, three weeks of vacation days a year?
So...
Holidays I've never heard of.
Okay, so, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, we're making a decision that's above and beyond the days that they get off, anyway, right?
In addition to what they're already giving, yes, because Friday, Friday, the 25th is the only thing that's listed in the employee handbook to get off.
So, we're adding days off to what is listed in the employee handbook?
It's at the council's discretion, is the way it reads.
I just think in the spirit of giving, we should give them the Christmas Eve off, the 24th.
Well, let's give them a week, in the spirit of...
Vicky?
If you're generous, let's be generous.
Make the motion, Vicky.
I'll second.
I made that as a motion.
I second.
You made what as a motion?
That we give all full-time employees Christmas Eve, 24th, off.
Okay.
Just the full-time, it's not the part-time, don't...
No, whatever.
I guess it'd be all employees.
Did you second that? Bill seconded that? Is there any further discussion?
Yes, so we've got Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, with nobody working, right?
Well, I...
That's not true, if it snows, they'll be out.
The policeman will be working, and, yeah, if it snows, but also, there'll be somebody on call.
Yeah.
You tell the guys you're on call.
On call during those four days.
Well, I would like to assure the people who listen to our council meetings, that somebody will take care of problems.
Yeah, the police will always be there.
And we'll have an on-call person for emergency, great, we don't have anyone.
Okay, if no other discussion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so they have the 24th off, and do you want to just leave it for New Year's Day, that they just get New Year's Day off, like we did last year?
Yes.
Okay, so we won't do any action on that. And then, you have one more item?
One more item, yeah, there's some information in the packet about this, utility rebate consultants, gentleman stopped by and dropped this information off, and I believe that we did something similar to this a few years back, I couldn't find the minutes, I don't know if we even put it in the minutes, or if we even brought it to the council's attention, but there wasn't any savings that I remember. But basically, they look at your utility bills to make sure that you're getting billed at the appropriate rate, if there are any cost savings, then they get 50% of the cost savings for a period of two years or three years, I don't remember what this agreement actually says.
Two years of savings, but the period runs for three years.
And I did, the mayor visited with me this afternoon, and I did listserv to see if any other cities had participated in this, and I got a response from the city amendment, they did participate, and there was some cost savings, but she said that it's, remember that it's for two years, so it wasn't real positive, but...
It was an ex-woeing recommendation, that's how I took it, they did it, but, so...
They stopped by the country club, too, and talked, to me, it fills up his treasury salesman.
I am not interested in them taking half, half of the savings. We did this in a property that I managed in Dallas, four blocks long and two blocks wide, and they did get our water utility, they got half of that savings. Well, I pulled our bills and was able to save that property of 100 homes, $52,000, and they didn't have to share it with anybody. It's just a matter of pulling the bills and looking them over, and seeing what meter says what, and what looks like it's out of kilter. It's like well number nine, you know, you know there's less usage because you haven't been using it, and it's just like that on anything else that meters utilities. I just can't see sharing a savings on something that we can do ourselves if there's a savings to it.
Debbie, would you repeat what you said?
I know when the bills come in, that Cindy does a good job looking them over, if there's anything out of line, she'll call and question.
You said?
A few months ago, West Star was in, and they had actually, they were, I think we sent it out in the information packet, maybe, they had actually had a spreadsheet and told us what the new rates were going to be with the rate increase, and then they had all of our accounts listed out, and they even had some notes to the side of, you know, this is only used part of the year, or, so they had kind of done their own internal audit. And, you know, I don't know that we would gain anything here, but I wanted to present it.
No interest?
No interest.
Okay, is there anything else? I, just with the city clerk, we lived at Christmas lights last year, I don't know if you guys remember, in January, after our Christmas lights were put away, so will you guys just take note of what our Christmas lights look around town, whether we need to replace them or not, so we can make a wise choice, maybe in January, again, when they'll be on sale, obviously, not now, they're all put up, but, you know. So, just kind of take note of them and see if you think we need to improve them.
Madam Mayor, may I ask something about the Christmas lights, too? I know on, a couple of times I've gone downtown, and sometimes they're put up during the daytime, and sometimes they're put up at nighttime. Well, my question is, if they're put up at nighttime, do they get compensatory time off, or how do we, how do we decide how they get paid for that?
I don't know when they put them up at night, they replace...
They put them up in the morning.
Well, a lot of times they'll wait, a lot of times they'll wait.
They're out of range, so...
Yeah, that's right, they wait some night evening till...
But they work, they get overtime to put up Christmas lights?
They do. I don't think they should get overtime.
I don't either, we, that's why I was...
Change their hours around.
We give them compensatory...
Compensatory time.
Compensatory time.
No, we do not have overtime.
Well, why not?
No, but I mean, they can come in later on in the day and work at night, or later on in the day, they don't have to come in at eight o'clock in the morning.
I don't think we should pay overtime for Christmas lights, we pay overtime for emergencies.
They need to be here during the workday, eight to five, if they're all off, because they're going to come in evening, put up lights, and there's a water leak, and they're going to come back in.
Well, the whole crew doesn't work to put up Christmas lights.
Oh, yeah, they do, they got a guy in a front end loader strapped in, and a guy driving, a guy handling, and then the other bunch is in the bucket trucks, stringing the other lights up, yeah, it takes quite a while to put Christmas lights up in City Marysville.
But I would think, but if there's an emergency, they will stop the Christmas lights and go deal with the emergency, but I still don't think we should use overtime. Overtime is for something that's an emergency, not for a recurring event. Pretty soon, we'd be paying them overtime to put up the flags, I mean, we can't allow that.
I agree.
So...
So, I'm sorry, Rick, there's no...
Okay, then what you're going to have to do, if that's going to be the case, then you're going to have to block off areas of the downtown during the workday, so people don't have a place to park, to do business with the businesses, so our crew can go down there during the day, during the workday, and hang the lights.
Well, I think we, I think we should do it, because other cities do it that way. I see other cities do it during the day.
When did you think they did it, if you said that they don't do it at night?
I was thinking something else.
Something else, okay, okay, thank you.
What I was thinking was, because like the streetlights, they replace at night, so they know which ones are out. Is that going to be your order, because that's going to affect how and when they get put up?
And they were right there in the middle of the highway, setting up those reeds across, and I wouldn't want to be doing that during rush hour.
I wouldn't either.
You could always do that over extended hours, and have them come in at 10, and work till 7, or something like that, other than paying time and a half.
Well, you can see the highway, maybe, but not downtown, you can back up a truck up to them poles and change them out without disturbing too much parking.
Those can be done during the day, all you do is block out the photocell, aren't they all on photocell?
You gotta hang lights up that, hanging lights?
Block out the, well, you said...
Hanging lights, hanging reeds?
They do the lights at night, just the regular city lights at night.
Well, but maybe our goal is to have minimal overtime, the majority of it, as much as possible, should be done during the normal business hours, or extended hours, offset by coming in late.
Okay, so did I just hear that we just paid an entire department to work overtime to put up Christmas lights? Didn't you say? Took the entire department?
On, most of them.
Yeah, I was concerned about that.
I looked at payroll, there was maybe two or three hours on each one.
You say it wasn't terrible out?
About two or three hours, each had about two or three hours.
That's all it took them to put the lights up?
Mm-hmm.
Two or three hours?
Other than the guards that had went in due to no traffic on the streets.
Yeah, I mean, if you had to, if you had to work around stuff, though, it's gonna take longer. I'm not, I think you could minimize.
Yeah, I, I think we should avoid overtime until, unless it's needed, so... All right, moving along for standing committees. Street?
At the new wall up in the city shop.
Hey, I drove by there, it looks nice. You can't even tell what's old and what's new.
Well, you shouldn't be, it's all new.
The whole west side is new?
The whole west side is new.
Oh, well, no wonder, I was like...
And believe me, there was a big difference, even though that was the original color, the tin they put on there. When they were putting the new stuff up and taking the old stuff off, there was a night and day difference between...
On the west side?
On the west side.
A new door in there too?
New door and, uh, no, window was fine.
Window?
Window was fine, it was aluminum, it didn't get into it.
But it looks nice on the west side.
Deals above the top of them are rusted out, so...
Very good, I'm glad we did that. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Water, wastewater? We have one item in here in our packet for a saw, for a air-operated ductile iron, cast iron chainsaw.
What's happened is, is the, the quickie saws that we have, they ran into a problem that night, they were working under by the Florida Express Barn. This Kent called me, very frustrated, saws were dying on them, and this is, this is one that will stand up to the water when, if they go to live line or something, or a lot of water left, there's always water left in the water, sprays out, and a lot of times it kills the saw. That was the problem they ran into that night, and he called me about this and said he would be sending me this, because this is supposed to be, saw is not gonna die when the water shoots out. I'd recommend approval.
$6,000 is a lot of money, though, for a saw. Do you guys want to talk about it at the budget workshop, since it's not a budgeted item?
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
I, you know, I kind of like to, these type of things, we should plan purchase rather than, you want to postpone it to the budget workshop?
I would.
You guys okay with that? All right, we'll discuss it that night. Kent will be there, so... And is there anything else for water, wastewater? All right, parks and rec? Cemetery and airport?
Did they get anything on the sidewalk or on the south side of the pool, or are they still waiting?
They're gonna try to pour at 2:00 in the morning. That's, that's the plan, we'll see what happens tomorrow.
Is it supposed to rain tomorrow?
No. No, but it is supposed to rain and snow Wednesday, Thursday.
Really? Before the parade?
That's what the blankets are for.
In snow. Oh, that's, okay, you blanket the entire sidewalk?
Yeah.
I got enough.
It gets covered now.
All right, fire and police. Our chief is up and ready to go.
How about putting your packets tonight? It's about the FBI Lita training in Memphis. It's not till next April. Seems kind of, and might seem kind of early, but with the way airlines are up and down, I like to get approval to where I can watch them, and then buy one that's the most cheapest. Uh, we can, we can do it out of Kansas City or Manhattan, either one. Manhattan's usually about $80 higher, but you don't pay for parking there, so it has to be weighed while we're doing the shopping thing to see which is the best cost. So, this is, um, 25th year anniversary of FBI Lita. As I said, I'm a past national president, kind of like to be there for it. I put in there with, in the packet, is the actual agenda for the training that's going to be there. So, what the room's gonna be like, FBI Lita, also about 80% of your meals are taken care of in the registration fee, which my registration fee is waived anyway, since I'm a past president, so it works out pretty nice.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I've looked this over, and on page 70, the registration fee, which is waived, but early registration is honored before March 12th, so we kind of have some time to consider this. Could we talk about this at workshop as well?
Sure.
Now, if he wants to book flights, I mean, that'd be...
The cheaper, sooner he books his flight, the cheaper it is.
I still think we need to discuss the workshop.
Well, I'm telling you what, there's more on that, there is more on that agenda, and you're gonna be, unless you're willing to stay here till about 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock.
We have before.
There's a lot on that.
Some have to get to work in the morning.
There's a lot on that agenda.
So, so...
You knew that when you rang.
So, Vicky, is your question about the specific training or, uh, training in general, or tell me what your concern is?
Okay, um, so for you to go to this training, Chief Ackerman, is the $350 cover all classes you're going to, or are classes extra?
No, that's a package, Jill.
It's a package.
You bet.
And you're gone. Conference dates are Monday through Wednesday?
Yeah, you go in on Sunday, and then you come, Wednesday night, it ends about 9:00 after the final banquet.
At night?
Yeah, it's, it's 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night when they get done with the banquet usually. Usually you go about, you go out the next morning, usually on Thursday morning.
So, you're going back on Thursday?
Yeah, we've actually shortened the conference. Back when I was president, it was actually a day longer. We've actually shortened it now, put an extra day now.
So, our expenses are flight, well, mileage to get to wherever you're going, Manhattan or wherever you're gonna fly out of, and hotel?
It won't be much, I'll probably just take the expeditions, what I usually have in the past.
Oh, well, that's right, okay. Well, then parking?
Yeah, unless I fly Manhattan, then there's no parking. It all depend on, compared to what parking will cost for a few days compared to what the ticket is. That's why I'm talking about shopping early to, to get a good balance on them.
Do you have to pay for parking at Manhattan?
No, no, it's free in Manhattan, Kansas City, nothing free in Kansas City.
So, so, do you think this benefits you or the, or the department, or tell me?
I've been, I've been involved with FBI Lita since the first year I became chief, because this is where I get a lot of my legal training. Um, I was on the National Board of Directors for six years for that, and it's nice having a, a voice in a national FBI group from a small agency. We don't always get that voice, but more and more now we are finally.
So, you feel like this is probably one of your better...
I wouldn't be asking you to go if I didn't.
You're better, like, if you were to pick a training, that, this is definitely one you would pick?
Oh, yeah, I agree, because there's, there's trainings all year long nationally I could be going to, but I've always stuck with FBI Lita for one. You're not gonna find a national conference at this price, because they waive my fee, 80% of your meals are taken care of in the fee that's waived for me. Um, their hotel room's only $139 a night, that's no different than going to Kansas City, you know, so it's, FBI Litas, they've always catered toward agencies the size of one to 50, and that works out very nice for most of us.
Is this even approved?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve your request. Second, what does Lita stand for?
Law Enforcement Executive Development Association. The FBI has three organizations. This one, National Academy, which I'm a graduate of, the 10-week academy in Quantico, and National Executive, which you have to have at least 500 officers. I've never been to that, and we're the, the three organizations under the umbrella of the FBI. And so far, I'm the only chief in the state of Kansas that ever sat on the National Board. Kind of nice.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayo, there you go, chief.
I got one other things. One other thing is also a training. The IMT group that I belong to, which is Incident Management Team, that's the team when we have a natural disaster. Uh, I'm a member, Toad's a member, and Rick's a member for now, until he retires. Um, we train throughout the year. Uh, about four years ago, they sent me and about eight others to Denver for three days. Um, they're asking to send me and two others from northeast Kansas, we're a 23-county region, in December for two and a half days. Um, they pay the entire tab for any time we train with IMT, but it's for the state of Kansas, um, but we have our choice, uh, to drive out. It's only seven hours from here to Denver, so I'd rather drive. They'll even pay the city mileage for, for me driving out, but they, they pick up the whole tab, and it's, it's part of my Incident Command System training, so...
Take the expedition?
Yeah, yeah, like I said, they're gonna be...
Would you take the other two with you from...
We have talked, there ones from Topeka and ones from, um, Lawrence. They can go across 70. When I go to Denver, I go out and cut down, down the Colby, that way, if I, if I went down to meet them, it'd be an extra hour and a half out of the way.
Will you get the opportunity to use your command center on your expedition?
Well, I already used it, we had a plane crash.
You used it then?
Oh, yeah. We had it all written up on there and stuff.
Okay.
Chief Ackerman?
Yeah.
The, uh, the police chiefs that went with you to Las Vegas, they're not getting to go to this?
No, this is something totally different. This is, this is the AHIMTA's All Hazards Incident Management Team. That's the association that we're gonna go do the training with. The Incident Management Teams is under the, we're provided for by the state. We're under the Assistant General's Office, uh, the Department of Emergency Management. They train us all under FEMA guidelines and state guidelines, um, so when there's a disaster like Greensburg or, uh, oh, where's some other places we've been?
Chaplin?
Yeah. But, you know, the, we, they take our team out, out of Harveyville, they took our team to the Hurricane Sandy, we were out there for two weeks, and they pay for everything for them. But you guys are lucky enough, and in this county, there's, there's three team members already here if something happens, and, uh, you know, once Rick does leave, I'd like to find another one in this area. It's kind of nice having, we got boots on the ground waiting for the team to show up, and it's, things happen a lot quicker and easier that way. But anyway, all the training we do with, I, the Kansas IMT, they pay for it all.
Okay, when is this training, and for how many days?
It's Monday, the, is that on 7? Can you see your calendar?
Yes.
Yeah, we drive out that Monday, get there that Monday evening, we come right back Thursday. I think we get out at like 10:00 in the morning or something like that. They'll do a closing ceremony.
It's only one day?
It's two and a half days, actually.
So, it's Monday, Tuesday, and...
It's Tuesday, Wednesday, and partial morning, Thursday morning usually.
So, you're driving out Monday?
And driving back Thursday.
So, you're going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
Yeah, we'll drive back Thursday. So, but it's an out-of-state training, and any time I go out-of-state training, I always bring it before the council.
Is there a motion?
I have to, sir.
Second. Any further discussion?
David's gonna be in charge on both sides of the going.
You bet, anytime I'm gone, David's in charge.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just as a, things, the cops and cookies thing, did anybody get any emails on that yet?
Yeah.
They're shutting it down till we can find, we, we talked about this, I have a lot of chief friends that do this, but they do it from like 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning at a coffee shop, or say at one of the CJ's, you know? We'll go down there and sit between all the, the guys at the coffee shop, we'll get the world fixed.
Yeah, we have some coffee drinkers here that find out a lot of excuses.
I'll bring my vest, and we'll sit down there and chat. But that's something we're talking about right now, is moving it maybe one month here, next month over here or something.
I think Debbie can give you some ideas, Darlene and Vicky.
I guarantee, I go to that coffee shop, there's definitely some ideas.
You know where the coffee shops are?
I know the ideas. Uh, you're talking about overtime, Thursday night, Thanksgiving night, we're always, we'll have two officers. They will be on holiday pay, but, and we're in Walmart, because of the things that happen in Walmart, every year we should pay.
Oh, because of Black Friday.
Yeah, for two, for, just for an hour and a half to two hours, but we will have two officers, and they're in uniform, on duty.
That's a good idea.
That's that way over here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other police and fire? Admin and finance? All right, um, there's some appointments listed on the page 72 at the back. I never did hear from Bud and Judy. Okay, so, um, the appointments are all prepared, except we will not approve the one from Bud and Judy, because I haven't heard, had a confirmation back from him yet, so all of them is listed except for Bud and Judy.
Move through the mayor's appointments.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayo? All right. City attorney, do you have anything?
Uh, just one thing. We've got a garage on Ace Street that has fallen in, and it appears the best way to pursue it is under our environmental code, but because of the way your ordinance is written, we have to start by the council doing an order of violation, and it has to be approved by the council, sending it to them, and then they have time to respond and abate the problem or not, and ask for a hearing. This is at 1100 North Ace Street, so trying to stick with our procedure, um, and that's what it says, that we find there's a violation of, uh, section 8308b2. The environmental code deals with outdoor structures, for one thing. I, I think it's pretty obvious, buildings have collapsed, uh, and nothing's happening with it. Uh, so, we have to give them time to alleviate the problem. They have a right to ask for a hearing if they want one. If they don't do any of that stuff, then we can go to city court and initiate a prosecution, but we can't do that unless we go through this procedure according to the city code.
All right.
So, I've just literally described for you, I've written up this order of violation, the mayor would need to sign it, and then we'd get it sent out.
We've dealt with this particular building before, this particular owner and this particular building before, so we're just starting, starting the process again.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion to, uh, proceed with the order of violation regarding the garage at 1100 North Ace, is that what you said?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayo? Is the order come out?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, you alluded to the fact that maybe we need to change the code.
Well, I just think it's a cumbersome procedure, uh, when you have, uh, an enforcement officer who's doing his job, and to go through this, but, that's just my opinion, you certainly are essentially saying, we don't want to do a criminal prosecution till it gets down the road a ways. By the way, they're entitled to 45 days. So, uh, in your procedure, so you have a dangerous building code, an environmental code, and a health code, and they all have a different way to get to court.
Resultant.
And all of them may apply. I looked at them and decided, well, we'll just go this one way, because if we try to include the others, trying to comply with all the different notice requirements sets you up for failure. So, I just think that, depending on how you want to handle these, I, I know this gets to be touchy, you know, these nuisance things are touchier than just dog at large. you know, these nuisance things are touchier than just dog at large. You know, if a person has a dog at large, boom, there's a ticket, they go to city court. There's no fix this problem, and yet for something that, I don't see how those are, that dog at large is worse than this, if anything, it's not. But, so those layers of procedure make it cumbersome to use the codes you adopt to get that stuff done. But that's kind of a policy issue. We can work with it, I mean, it's workable.
On this one, Norbert, this particular homeowner believes he has come into compliance. He had that garage full of stuff, and it had a gasoline-powered engine in there. I can't remember what, if it was a motorcycle or what it was, but the roof was caving in, and I don't know, he discussed with somebody, he wanted to keep the walls, the three walls. And so he got the roof removed, and removed, I think, the gasoline engine and cleaned stuff up in there, and thinking that he could keep this, but I think the walls are unstable, and that's why it's come back to the council's attention.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So I think, I think, I know a conversation needs to be had with this man to say, no, you were under that, under that opinion, that you didn't have to do anything with this, but this is becoming an untenable situation, I think. Because I think he'll let this go all the way to going to court, or letting the 45 days lapse, and then pose an objection. I've talked to him personally about that, about that garage or shed or lean-to, or whatever it is, but it no longer has a roof on it, and the walls are not, they're not stable.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I think we need to work on streamlining our codes, so they're not so cumbersome.
I did receive the code, the league handles our code updates, and we went through that in 2011, and had everything up to date, and adopted the code. And I've been sending them updates as we pass ordinances to update our codebook, and I now got the updates back, and there are several comments and suggestions from the league about cleaning up different portions and things, so I was going to visit with the mayor about that and see if we could, maybe admin finance could take on some of that a little bit at a time, and then come back all together and go over.
Make recommendations.
Yeah, so that might be something that we include in that.
I'd like to, I think, yeah, at least look at it and see what the options are.
Okay. All right. Brad, I think you wanted an executive session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to talk about non-elected personnel.
For about how long?
10, well, I don't know the subject.
15 minutes.
15 minutes?
Let's go ahead and make it 15.
Okay, so it's 8:30, so.
Returning at 8:45?
45.
And I would be the council and the city attorney?
Whoever, actually whoever would be knowledgeable on the topic.
Okay.
You probably know the subject better.
Yeah, probably the city council, the mayor, and the city attorney will be sufficient.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll go into the executive session for 15 minutes.
So I move that we return to executive session, it's the same topic.
So non-elected personnel regarding employees?
Talk about non-elected personnel.
We decided for 10 minutes. 15?
Okay, so leaving at quarter till 9:00, returning at 9:00.
All right, is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, we are resuming our regular meeting, and no binding decisions were made in executive session. So moving on to round tables. There's a couple quick things I just want to say. The council meetings are video, council meeting video is on the website now. So you can go to the tab of council meetings, and there's minutes, agendas, and now there's, you can see videos of our meetings. So thank you Scott Keller for doing that.
Thank you, Scott.
The other thing is to remember to do light up Marysville, I know Brad's all over that, but to decorate your homes and light up Marysville. Our budget workshop is December 1st at 5:00.
5:15.
5:15?
5:30.
What is it?
5:45.
I'm sorry, I spent another number on.
I get off work at 5:00.
What is it, 5:1?
We can do it 5:15, it's scheduled, right, at 5:30, we can make it 5:15.
5:15 on December 1st?
5:15, yeah.
Did you have a, you're going to report on black squirrels?
What?
Are you going to report on black squirrels on parade?
The next meeting is December 9th. I had, I missed the last one, because I got called out on the road.
And the black squirrel in the city park has gone from nine feet to five feet. They decided five feet was big enough, so just wanted to let you know that. And the renewable energy that was in the info packet, Bill, do you know anything about renewable energy? This, the information that was in the info packet? Since you're, since you're an energy guy, I didn't know if you thought, if you looked at that to see if there's things that we as a city can do?
Oh, there's probably always.
Will you at least look at that and get a thought processor?
Yep.
Okay, and our parade, we all have our antlers, the parade starts at 11:00, so we're meeting at 4th and Broadway, about 10:40. And are you, Bill, are you getting golf carts?
I'm going to try and get more golf carts, but I got to get a truck to haul the golf carts down, and...
We have a trailer, the city has a trailer. Can't that big trailer haul down golf carts?
It'll haul a couple of them, that's a nice trailer.
We have that great big trailer.
It sits out the cemetery, you can go look at it, Bill.
You want to talk to Dale and see if he can get it to help you?
Yeah, I will, I may talk to somebody else, too.
Okay. So I know my car, are you driving my car?
Oh, yes.
With Miss Merry Christmas? Okay, I cleaned it, so it's all ready to go. Okay, so that's the parade on Saturday. I'll get the name tags made this week. And the last thing I want to say is just a thank you for each of you for serving on city council. This is a time of Thanksgiving to look at our blessings, and I want to know that each and every one of you are truly a blessing to me personally and to our city. And I'd like to add Debbie and Rick and Norbert and all our city staff, we're so blessed to have you serve with us. So, all right, Keith?
I was going to take a look at the dog park, is that done? Is that completed now?
No.
I mean, I've got, no?
Still fundraising, they're still bringing in money.
They haven't even started on it, then?
Yeah, he kind of said that when school started, he was going to kind of put it off. I mean, he's trying to raise money, but he probably personally won't have any labor time until some spring, do you think?
It's too late now, don't they? Maybe in spring. I think some more money came in this week.
Okay, second thing, we approved a CES payment, the bid, anyway?
The proposal for the GMA?
Do we need to do the one on page 47.2? It's a, is that a separate one with, where we have to pay the $37,000 in case he pays us back? Does that need a motion?
No, no, that's just a, no, that's.
For Casey's?
That's just, was information that, he's working with them.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know if that needed a separate motion on that.
Get them to agree to.
All right, that's all I got.
That would reduce our costs.
We're hopeful that they'll pay us back $37,000.
Cross your fingers.
Yeah. Bill?
I don't have any.
Other than bringing the golf carts, thank you very much.
Yeah, I need to bring the golf carts. If it starts snowing or gets icy, though, those golf carts don't work in that way.
Okay, then we're going to have to walk, okay. Draymond will be walking again. Okay, Darlene?
No, don't have anything.
Brad?
I will just, in the, extend your, your thank you and say thank you for, to the mayor for serving, and I think you said staff, but I want to thank the volunteer fire department and the police department for their service.
Absolutely, for their service.
Absolutely. And the video, volunteer video.
Our volunteer video people, yes, yes.
Big crowd out there.
Okay, Todd?
I'm not sure when it went up, but I'm glad, thanks to whoever put the recycling trailer back on its wheels. I noticed it like a week and a half ago, I don't know when it got set upright, I got so used to it, it surprised me to see it upright.
It was before the last recycling day.
Was it?
Yes.
It's been a couple, three weeks ago. I was going to say, I was just going to say, I used to see it lay down.
It was already before the last council meeting.
Who did it?
Jimmy and one of the guys from Lando.
Good.
Brought to my.
Dave Rush. Oh, okay. Was it Dave Rush?
I don't know him, I don't know who it was.
Did it free of charge?
So far, so far. I don't think Jimmy's going to charge.
Okay, great. The other one was, I noticed there was a reasonably bad accident tonight here at 10th and Center, and then Ben Cones out, and they were directing traffic. It looked like the police and everybody involved did a good job directing traffic, but one time we discussed that those stoplights could be set to just flash for emergencies or when there's accidents and things, and the stoplights kept cycling, and it looked like it was causing some confusion off of 10th Street, because they would get a green light, but then they were being signaled to stop. Again, I think it was done fine, but do our police have access to change those to just flash in situations like that, or does it have to go through the street department?
No, street department, I don't know, water department.
Water department, which seems odd.
It's up to emergency responders whether they want those to flash.
Okay, but they can, if they, if they would have wanted to, they could have, it wasn't.
Call for it, it could have been done.
I didn't know if, because it was after hours, if that mattered, or whatever, but.
It was still 4:30, they still could have cut it.
I didn't know what the exact time of the accident was, but I was just, I was just curious about that. Follow-up, why is the water department charged with street lights?
They don't know. They don't understand.
Aren't we sure we call it water lights?
No, I have a kid, tell me one time.
Why are they charged?
Because they do a very good job.
Because they like it, okay. They're running out in front of the.
Yeah, why are they charged for putting up the Christmas lights?
Home bank up there, or whatever it is now. Yeah. It's completely out.
Yes, we know about that, don't know why.
So, okay, that's, go ahead.
Vicki? Well, I wanted to say what a good M act we have. Our actors are great. They did a play, an Agatha Christie play, that was very interesting, very exciting, a good, nice entertainment. Thank you, thank you to our talented people here in Marysville and the county. And then this morning, our US Senator Jerry Moran was in Beatty, because he said he didn't want to go to all the town seats, he knew that other towns were important, too, but he was, Darlene was there, and who else was there from the city? Darling, was it just us from the city?
Everything.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carla, yes, Carla was there, too. Yeah, she was there, too. And he would like to encourage us to contact his office if there is anything that he can do for us. So I just, I like the idea of being able to go to those to kind of keep Marysville on the radar of our US and state congresspeople.
What time was he there?
He was there at 9:30 this morning, 9:30 to 10:30.
Does he ever make night appointment appearances, or is he only there during the day?
I wouldn't know that, we're not that close.
No, I was going to take coffee in the middle of the morning, Beatty.
He got a Beatty, yeah.
So that's all I had.
All right, Denny?